Welcome to the Wednesday, August ninth, two thousand and seventeen Bethlehem Board of Central, Bethlehem Central Board of Education meeting. We were in executive session from six thirty to seven discussing a personnel matter. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Dave Hurst.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Charmaine Widgesinger.
Jody Monroe.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lenhart.
Meredith Moriarty.
Judy Kehoe.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July twelfth, two thousand and seventeen Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business superintendent's report.
Thank you. One announcement I wanted to make, and we just sent out an SNN about, some of you may have seen it, this year on Monday, September eighteenth, we are hosting a K five Out and About Community Activities Fair. This is actually an effort by the Coordinated School Health Team and to extend opportunities for elementary students to, if they're not involved, to find ways they can get involved in the community. So we've already had a lot of groups indicate they're willing to come and have a table and be present at that. So we're hoping we'll have a great turnout. It's from six thirty to eight o'clock in the high school cafeteria. So if there's any groups that you know of that we have students who may be interested in participating, please have them contact us and we'll get them connected to that. Also, just a couple of individuals who are here this evening to follow up on some of the board's requests. Len Keys is here, our Director of Athletics. Last week, we presented a change to the track program for the winter and spring, and so I asked if he could come and answer any questions that you might have about those changes. And also Ray Nardelli, our Director of Technology, is here this evening to talk about any questions you may have on the power of one, which we're sending out communication in the next days too. And we have a lot of tech policies on the agenda for this evening. So we'll start with Len for any board members who have some questions that he can help answer or clarify.
That's what I was gonna say. Can you give me an overview?
Yeah, but use the lights, though.
I don't have my outside voice yet.
I think it only, I, I know, sometimes if you watch the tape, unless people speak into the mic, you don't pick up on the tape.
Yeah, that's right.
This is better?
Yeah.
Okay. So let me first start by saying, there is absolutely no reduction in the number of coaches within our track and field programs, both in the indoor winter season as well as the spring outdoor season. So under our current model, the traditional model, we have a varsity boys head coach, varsity girls head coach, two assistants below each, for a total of six district budgeted coaches, both for the indoor and the winter seasons. What we are looking to do as a pilot program in the seventeen eighteen school year is to move to what's called the collegiate model. So rather than having two varsity head coaches at the top, there would be one executive head coach, the other five positions would be varsity assistants below. So again, no decrease in the amount of instruction, no decrease in the amount of coaches. Basically, what we have been observing over the last couple of years is kind of a disjointed philosophy, different training techniques, and probably less than optimal utilization of our assistant coaches. So we're going to attempt to kind of put this all under the same family, so to speak, have one training philosophy, and better utilize our specialists. We really do have a pretty strong coaching staff. They each have expertise in the different events, and we don't want it to be, well, you're the boys' jumping coach, or you're the girls' sprinting coach. So we're going to try this model, and, and once we go through our interview process early in the year, we'll, we'll have our executive head coach, and then he or she and I will then together formulate what that might look like going forward, as far as who will be working specifically with what.
I have a question now.
Sure.
So with the boys' track team, how many boys typically run in a season or do events? And how many coaches are there?
Currently, and, and you know, we've talked about it here frequently over the years during budget times, our boys' and our girls' track teams are very, very large. Slightly smaller in the indoor season, the winter season, but both of them are in the three figures. They're both in the low hundreds. Girls tend to be a little bit larger, about one twenty, boys tend to be one oh five, one ten, and then that number jumps in the springtime. Typically, one sixty, one seventy in our, in our girls, could be up to one forty in our boys, you know, and that's an average, you know, probably in the last four, four years or so. So there, we're talking very large numbers. Up until a couple of years ago, I believe, we had that full complement in the springtime, and thanks to our track and field boosters, for years, they always supplemented our coaching staff in the winter. Couple of budget cycles ago, we were able to put back that second assistant for both teams for the indoor season.
So how many, so in the girls' that you're discussing, you have one executive head coach and four varsity assistants below, is that correct?
Five varsity assistants below.
Is it the same for boys? What is the boys?
No, that's overall.
Oh, it's all? How is that split?
So currently, that's what we're going to be looking at. So currently, we have a varsity girls' head coach, two assistants, a varsity boys' head coach, two assistants. We're gonna now, for a total of six coaches total. What we are going to do now, what we're looking to do now, is have one executive head coach and five assistants.
Okay.
That can be divvied up by event rather than gender and event. And what we are finding is that we're not utilizing the expertise of our coaching staff because we're getting caught up in the gender. So if I have a strong field coach who might be on our boys' side of the coaching staff traditionally, and I have girls who may get benefits from working with that coach's expertise, this will easier facilitate that.
It sounds really good in theory. I'm just gonna tell you from what I've heard, and I don't have anybody who runs track, so it's as objective as it could possibly be, is that the boys' team has been very strong with the coaching, the girls haven't had as much coaching. So will this model, since the boys are being so successful, or we're hearing great reports on how it's working, the program, is, will it continue that way? I guess we won't know until we try the new model.
Absolutely. You never know until the season unfolds. I'm pretty confident that we will see the same levels of success in our boys. And our girls, you know, traditionally, you know, have, have been very strong as well. We have a couple of major college commits for our girls.
No.
For this coming year, I mean.
Right.
Who, you know, who were leaders in, you know, last year as far as, you know, performing. I think this will just give us a little bit more balance, put everyone on the same page as far as expectations, and again, really utilize our staff to the best of its ability.
No, I know we have a strong girls' track team. I think I was just, what I was trying to get to is that there's clearly, in the spring season, a significant number of girls compared to the boys, probably a fifty differential head count. Are we gonna see the difference in, and I don't hear, normally I don't hear complaints about the boys' team and the coaching, I hear it about the girls' team, not necessarily meaning that they're not successful, but it just doesn't run as smooth. So are we just like playing around because we're understaffed, or is it, you think this model's just gonna be so much better?
No, I do. I believe that this can be a very successful, this is a model that's been used within the suburban council by Saratoga Springs, who's been the elite program for twenty-five years. This is the model that colleges and universities use with literally the same number, you know, of, of coaches. What we run up against, you know, and of course Charmaine can speak on to it, you know, we don't have, we have a no-cut policy in the suburban council, which is not a bad thing, but it also needs to be monitored. While most certainly you don't need to be an elite track and field athlete to participate and be a varsity winner, award winner, letter winner, it is a varsity sport, and the expectations of coming every day, practicing, working hard, you know, bettering yourself, those are integral, you know, to how authentic that varsity letter is. So these are all things, but I, going back to the, to the main piece for me, is making sure that the training philosophy, the dedication level is across the board, because obviously nobody hears about it more than I, you know, when people have concerns in it, and I feel that this can really remedy that, but at the same time, kind of bring us up to that next level.
Is this normal staffing levels for the number of students that we have?
It's, it's very comparable with the rest of the double A's, and again, we're very fortunate, I keep pointing back there to Ms. Bliss, our president of the Track and Field Boosters. Last year as well, they always supplement our coaching staff with program assistants, either full-time or part-times. Last year, we had two part-times that were tremendous assistants for us, and I'm sure as we get closer and closer, I'm sure those conversations will be had with the, you know, executive head coach-to-be, and we'll be able to really see where our little gaps are and how we can supplement that. So I'm sure we'll be knocking on Ms. Bliss's door soon.
Thank you.
So if I heard you correctly, you said that suburban council has no-cut policy. Does that mean that the same numbers, if they want to run, will have the opportunity to run?
Yes. Assuming that they follow all the team guidelines and rules, showing up for practice, showing up for meets, you know, just, but as long as they're there doing their best, absolutely there's a place on the team. It's one of the reasons when Bethlehem, Shenandoah, and the Shaker, the three largest programs have a try meet, you know, we probably have a dozen exhibition heats, so that way we can get all those student athletes to perform in their event.
Thank you.
And it's also, just to speak up from the track, it's runners, throwers, and jumpers, because oftentimes we think of track as the runners, but it's, we have to know that there's the jumpers and the throwers.
Absolutely.
So, but my daughter said something about new pits. Are you getting new, she said, Mom, we're getting new pits.
We are. We are getting brand-new sand in our jumping pits. Mr. Nolte and Mr. O'Donnell, our, our head groundskeeper, have been working on this since March, and now we've really gotten to the piece where we are looking at the three or four specific sands, because we did have some concern about that last spring. Probably about two-thirds of the sand that was in the pits last spring was new. It's a mason sand, but it was a mix for years and years where there was sawdust in there and just, just like everything else, where we're elevating our facilities, the jumping pits are now being kind of tended to. So those, I expect those will be outstanding for the spring.
And I don't know if the boosters wants to make any comment, but I think the benefit of this proposal, although you haven't implemented it yet, is, I think, consistency in philosophy, perhaps consistency in workouts, so that sprinters, I mean, obviously there may be some modification, but I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot, because I know my daughter's training with coaches right now who take, is on boys and girls. Philosophy, expectation, workouts will help, I think, strengthen both teams.
I'm pretty confident that, that that's gonna be a seamless transition. Right now, honestly, we have two very divergent philosophies, and I, to be the best one for the girls and for the boys, it needs to be common.
And I think for the girls' team, it may be an adjustment in terms of either numbers or expectations, but I think, I would imagine that with, you know, your guidance and support and the guidance of the coaching, coaches, that will go smoothly, I would hope. And if people will, if not, we'll hear the concerns.
If you have an influx of students next year, let's say there's a cohort and you get forty more students, would that be something you would raise attention for safety purposes for an additional coach? Like what would be the next number?
Yeah, if we get to that level where we feel that we're not safely able to instruct and we don't have program assistance added on for a couple of days here and there, that's something we would certainly always look at.
Okay.
Participation numbers in those sports will always drive my request for additional.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Nardelli is here to, hopefully you had a chance to look at the document he provided just about the process for pickup and some of the professional development and things that have already been done. So Ray, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, or you just want to answer any questions the board may have about where you are right now?
Yeah, so the Chrome, we got our first delivery. It's not that exciting yet. I mean, it's just a, it looks like all the rest of them. I don't know, is this working?
Doesn't sound like it is.
Doesn't sound like it.
Maybe tap it, you'll know.
Good idea.
Just answer.
So anyway, we have the, we have our first delivery. We're expecting the rest to come in the end of this week, which is great, because that was really the only thing that was out of our control, was, we ordered these in May, Sal did it long ago, but Google was actually putting together a new operating system, and they wouldn't let these things go out until the new operating system went on, and so anyway, Sal and his team did a great job of getting this stuff in, and they're, they're a little later than we wanted them. We were hoping them for early to mid-July, but we, we'll be able to pull this off. And then I did share with you notes. I hope you took a look at them. So, you know, unless you want me to detail, go, go through that, I mean, I, I'm happy to answer any questions, but in general, I think, you know, even though I just came on July first, July third, I feel like the team is really working well and feel good about it. I'm not losing any sleep now. So is there any questions on any of those details?
Have you gotten any comments from parents regarding the SNNs that went out regarding the distribution?
Yeah, so last week, we sent out some, some messages about distribution dates, and I got probably, I put my email on there, and I got about twenty parents who said that they're on vacation, or is it okay if a parent picks it up instead of the student, things like that. So we are gonna add a couple extra distribution dates to accommodate people who are on vacation for those three days. So in, in the end, I think we have, we'll end up with seven different distribution dates, and I think that'll cover almost, that gives people the opportunity, including, the last date will be after freshman orientation, the day before school, so if, you know, I assume everyone's back from vacation by then, so they could definitely come in that day to pick them up.
I have a question. So I know this professional development for teachers, what about for parents? Because, let's say, so a student, for a, so a high school or a kid using an elementary school, and I know my kids are much more tech savvy than I am. Are you gonna provide any guidance for parents on how to support their child, or?
I know, we did have several sessions during the budget vote the evening. I know Dave was there and Sal, and we had a fairly decent number of people attend. If there is a need or parents would like to learn more about that, we certainly could offer something like that again for families who might have an interest in, you know, knowing what their child is doing, or if they have concerns about security. You know, a lot of people hear Google, they don't realize, they think larger-scale Google and not Google Apps for Education, which is a much more secure environment, but yeah, we certainly could offer something for parents if there's a need.
Either if you hear through the PTAs that there's a need, but, you know, parents may have some questions about, so what does this mean for instructions? How do I support my kid? Is it secure?
Right.
As opposed to answering individual emails, it might be nice to have some, you know, info sessions early on if you feel like this needs.
We do have information on the website as well for a fan.
I don't know if that's been published yet.
Is it live?
Has that, have we put the, the parent information out there yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so what was holding us up and putting out information on the web was, there's some policies that are gonna be voted on tonight or approved tonight, hopefully. Once those all go through, then we'll actually put the links to those policies on the website, and then that kind of, you know, finishes that part. And, you know, I think with, with regard to training for, for parents, Sal did do a couple of parent info nights, or maybe one night back-to-back. There, there's a video on the web, on our website, that has the, the recording from one of those parent info nights, so that, that would be one thing to point people to if they haven't seen that. But I'm totally open to kind of taking the pulse of the parents a couple weeks into school to see how it's going. I don't know how, I would look to, to my colleagues to determine the best way to do that, whether that's at a board meeting or, you know, another open Q and A session. I'd, I'd love to do it.
And what's required for the students to pick up? What kind of form do they have to fill out?
So there's a, yep, there's a, there's a, I forget the exact name of it, but just they're, they're one-to-one district guidelines, and it doesn't actually specifically deal with the Chromebook. It's, it's any district device that we might give them, but there's a, basically a code of conduct that, that the, the students and then the parents have to read through and sign off on that. And that document, along with the acceptable use policy, which you're voting, what you're reviewing tonight, the internet safety policy, there's a code of conduct, all those things are supposed to be reviewed by the student and the parent. They sign this document, and then that's their ticket to getting their Chromebook. We won't give them a Chromebook unless that's signed by parent and student.
And for the high school students, we're actually mailing a hard copy letter with that agreement form, just to really try and get the word out there, because not everyone is going on Aspen in August. So we'll put it on Aspen, but we're also mailing that out.
And an email, right? An email to all high school parents. So there'll be lots of opportunities for them to, to get, get ahold of this form.
And the high school students' insurance aspect of it?
Yeah.
We're self-insured now for the Chromebooks. Excellent. I like that. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Ray and his team, really. They've been doing a lot of work this summer, and Ray, just beginning in July, he's kind of thrown into it, but they've done a great job in getting all the things done that need to be done, so thank you.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
It's been real fun, believe it or not.
Do you have anything else? No, that's it.
Next up, the Board of Education report. Does anybody have a topic they want to talk about?
I have a couple things, but I don't know if anybody else. I went to the farmer's market a couple of weeks ago, and the middle schools actually had a stand selling flowers and fresh vegetables, which were great. I also noticed that their stand is directly across from the stand from the Albany High School, kids selling produce, and I thought, what a wonderful opportunity, should they both have stands together, to have a discussion about the differences between gardening at our middle school and gardening in a more urban environment. They were literally right across the walkway from each other. So that was an interesting setup. And I also was able to go to the Extended School Year Talent Showcase, which was, I think just this past week, last week, and was fabulous. There were kids from that program singing, dancing, doing interpretive readings or dancing themselves, and for those students who could not participate in person because of the nature of his or her skill or comfort level, they actually videoed kids building with Legos or doing puzzles. I had never been to it, but I encourage you that if you're available next summer to attend. It was incredible. And at the end, they had a big song at the end, kind of a ending piece, and not only were all the kids who were performing up on the stage dancing, but all the kids from the classrooms decided to get up and dance too. It was amazing. So I really appreciate the staff and the parents who helped the kids prepare, but it was really a special, special event.
There are pictures on the website now, too.
I'm sorry?
There are pictures on the website.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was great. It was really great.
I couldn't go this year, but I have gone before. I mean, it's really remarkable.
It was.
How this goes before.
Anybody else? I think Charmaine brings up a really good topic about the two farm stands being across from each other, and I'm curious, as a district, and I don't know the answer to this, do we do anything to promote working with urban school districts and getting our student body to work with urban school districts and vice versa?
We had an exchange program, do you remember that? Maybe not. Exchange program a couple of years ago, and their students were gonna come here with Albany City, Albany High School.
Yeah, we had.
We ended up having one student go there, but I'm not sure anybody was, from there was able to come here.
Right. None of them took advantage of that. We, we had had several meetings with several school districts, but particularly Albany, had expressed interest to try and look at programs we offer, classes we offered, and see how we could maximize opportunities for their students and our students. And the challenge really ended up being schedules. You know, you're trying to align a student to go there, come here and take classes. When your schedules don't line up, it didn't work out the greatest. I did have a conversation recently with their superintendent, who is now not going to be their superintendent, about trying to do some activities more through co-curricular activities.
That's what I was thinking.
Because I think that would be easier to work out than it is to try and do classes. So if there's an opportunity with the incoming superintendent, I think that would be great. In fact, I, we were supposed to, at the time, have a meeting, and I know Pat Fahey was interested and was looking for if there was any funding requirements or that we needed, she was going to help, but now with the transition of the superintendent, that's, will take a little bit more time.
To Charmaine's point more directly, it wouldn't be a reach to, I know that one of the middle school students mentioned to me that, because I also was at the farmer's market the same day, and mentioned to me that they were gonna be there again later in August. It wouldn't be a reach to go to the manager of the farmer's market and ask for the two stands to be placed next to each other, because I, I think what you would end up with is the kids on their own would have that interaction.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of promoting opportunities to integrate the two communities, and for example, there's a fifteen love tennis team that's, they, they have in Albany, and they invite kids from Bethlehem go, and they play for free, and it's with inner-city kids. And I think the more opportunities that we can create, I'm, you know, asking the board, I think that would be an opportunity for Bethlehem to stand out, that we're really challenging and promoting diversity in the school, and I think sometimes we miss some opportunities and.
And that's actually one of our goals.
And that's one of our goals.
It'll be interesting about the, being a person who used to put the little tape down on the farmer's market, telling each, each vendor where he or she could have, I think those are preset, but they're right across from each other, so Mark Warford could just say, why don't you have your kids go across? But the other thing, I had mentioned it to Jody, was there are historically black colleges and universities in the country.
Yeah.
And I said, you know, it would be interesting to have in our showcases, when we have, you know, the college coming or info session, to have sessions for, for any student who might be interested in attending a historically black college/university, and if we did not have enough students, or we felt like there would not be enough of a student or audience, they should partner with Schenectady or Albany, so that either students could come here or we could go there to, because I'm sure there are some kids who may want to consider that option. So I said that, there's an opportunity to.
And the other thing is, I wanted to, I'm wondering if Dave or Jody has some information on the geometry that, and did that really affect a lot of the scores?
So we had two hundred and three, I believe was the number, out of three hundred students whose scores were impacted by the change.
Wow.
So all of the records have been updated in Aspen. Parents were notified, students were notified, and yeah, it was quite the show.
But can, can clarify, State Ed was aware of this issue?
So State Ed was aware of it back when the exam was given.
They didn't tell us?
Well, so they, initially, they made adjustments to two of the questions, one of which is the one they finally threw out, but they basically initially accepted, they were gonna accept two out of the four responses, and then finally they said, no, we'll just sort of scrap the question. But statewide, this exam performed much, much worse than it has historically. It performed much worse than both the Algebra I and Algebra II exams. You know, the math listserv, and ninety-nine percent of the complaints this year were geometry-related, whereas in the past, they were typically split between the three exams. This year was, people were all over the geometry exam.
This was really surprising, because teachers were involved in the creation and the checking of the exam for its validity.
The teachers write the questions, the questions are field-tested, they're, then they put the exams together. I mean, the exams are put together two years out. They're reviewed, they're.
But not all teachers write the questions, because I, I coach tennis.
No, 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 but all the exams are written by teachers.
As opposed to Pearson writing or whatever.
Oh, okay, because I know somebody who writes the questions for the New York State Regents, and she's not a teacher, so.
For the.
But they were reviewed, they had teacher.
But things get missed, and there's, there's, you know, things that do happen like that. I think the frustration is that it was brought up early on, and it took a month, more than a month for State Ed to give guidance, and it required us to go back through, re-score all of the, and look through everything and change all the records.
But I thought the scores went up significantly. They didn't?
In geometry? Not geometry.
On the Regents exam.
Not in geometry.
And have we looked at that? Like, we're gonna let it affect the students?
Well, we did that analysis, and again, even though the scores didn't necessarily go up, the impact on overall average is basically the same as it's been historically. Part of my presentation in September, when I do the academic update, well, I'm gonna go through all of the impacts each course the Regents exam has, and that piece did not change significantly whatsoever.
Do we know how much the score changed from last year to this year, because you stated it historically was the worst that it's been?
Well, don't forget, the exam's only really been offered for three years, the first of which kids had the option to take both, so that exam, you really couldn't take a look at. But the, I, I mean, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was, it did take a dip.
You know I'll love them in September, right?
But this was statewide, so I mean, it's.
Right, this was.
No, I know.
But again, when you look at the impact on kids' final averages, that piece did not change from last year.
And your update will be given in September?
The first board meeting in September.
I guess I just, I still wanna, I would like to see, I guess this is what I would like the board to see if possible, what the grades were, I know this would be difficult, but it would be a really good data exercise, what the grades were prior to the Regents exam, the average for that particular student. like the board to see if possible, what the grades were, I know this would be difficult, but it would be a really good data exercise, what the grades were prior to the Regents exam, the average for that particular student.
You're going to have that.
That's what he...
Okay, so you have up till fourth quarter what the average would be for...
Yeah, I presented that last year, and I'll present it again this year.
And then how the Regents either helped or didn't help.
And if by course, so, obviously, the students like in AP History that take the Regents exam, that exam has a pretty substantial positive impact on their final...
Right, it does. I know there, I'm not in favor of using the Regents as a final, I mean, that's my personal view, is I don't think it's a good practice, but because there are classes that do help significantly, US History being one, but I think in the math classes especially, it's been a significant issue for the last three years.
Well, I'll show you the number, I mean, other than the geometry anomaly this year, that's not, it's pretty much either a wash or it has helped the students.
Okay. I'll look forward to it.
Which was also the case last year.
Soon we might not be able to use them anyhow.
Oh, yeah, it won't matter anyway.
Possible.
Oh, they've changed that already, or?
Well, they're thinking about changing it.
They were considering going to a 1 through 5.
A 1 through 5, like the AP, which I think would be fabulous, because then we couldn't use it for a final exam score, but I know it would be a little more work, but... So, they're changing that, they're changing their thought on that?
There's discussions, while, again, there's a large contingent in the state that want to continue with 0 to 100.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda are presentations. The first one is developing a district strategic plan by Ms. Winer.
Thanks.
So, tonight is a little bit of a two-part presentation. The first part will be reviewing the district goals for this year. Some of them are continuations of goals we began last year, and some of them are new. And then the process to develop a district strategic plan, which would be more long-range planning. So, our district goals have remained unchanged, knowledge, character, value. As you know, at the beginning of every board presentation, we highlight these, and since we're going to be talking about all of the goals tonight, we will make sure to incorporate all of them. And this would be something that we'd want to look at as part of the strategic plan. So, I want to, rather than just talk about the goals, I thought putting a little video together would be a little more entertaining, so you don't have to listen to me the whole time. And it highlights where, what our goals will be, and then I'll go through some of the timeframes for implementation of those, so...
Do I need to hit something, Brittany, or can you look it up?
Where's your mic? Oh, is it right? No, I'm just joking.
Is there volume on this, Nick?
Oh, I've never, I didn't know, I didn't know.
Good thing our tech director's here.
There you go.
Oh, look at that.
Sound or something? It was, stop it for a second.
Sorry about the music. I'm going to go ahead and highlight just some timeframes for you. How do we get rid of this? Can I get rid of that? No, I'm looking for it to get this to show.
Minor technical difficulties, sorry. Hopefully, it'll stay there. Where do you want it?
Okay, sorry about that. So, our first goal is knowledge, and we talk about technology integration and program reviews, essentially the timeframe. We're using the same template we used last year, if you recall, where we have who's responsible, who's the lead, who's supporting on that, and what's the timeframes for accomplishing that. We'll do a mid-year update on how we're progressing through those goals, as well as an end-of-the-year review and determine which goals that we will continue and which goals we've met. Also, we mentioned teacher training. We're looking at, obviously, teacher training for, we've had a lot of new teachers in the last few years. As of this year, we probably will have close to 60 new teachers, and we anticipate in the next few years, we'll have a larger group. So, one of the things that we put on hold during budget reductions was really professional development for our new staff. So, we actually just met the other day to determine a plan for our K-5 teachers specifically. Secondary, we do a lot of that through departments, in coming up with a plan for professional development, so that they're all aware of the curriculum and anything they need to know in order to successfully teach and assess students. The cess, as we mentioned in one of the goals, one of the things, there's been a lot of change in the Special Education Department. So, the administrative team felt that providing staff with an overview of Special Education services, as well as legal requirements for all staff, would be important. So, that's one of our goals under knowledge as well. And as you saw, I read, we talked about quite, this quite a bit during the budget process. This will be a part of our RTI program for, an AIS program for K-8. It's a benchmarking assessment that's normed, and also provides interventions for students who need support. It's web-based, so students can use it on any device that they can access the web from. In character, last year, we spent a lot of time with a coordinated health team on really developing that and who was going to be overseeing different components of the coordinated health team. We did some outreach to staff and families to expand some of those initiatives. One of the areas we need to look at a little bit more is in the wellness policy area. We need to look at some of our mental health services, which is not currently included in that policy, looking for staff wellness, student wellness, and how to bring that more to the forefront for everyone. Supporting a diverse student body is, again, something that we recognize a need for. We talked a little bit about this earlier, looking at our ENL populations and how do we provide professional development for all of our staff to address those needs. Our safety team training, this is a continuation, actually, of a goal last year, where we implemented new building safety plans. We provided professional development and training. This year, we'll continue that. We also provided information to families, because there were changes in regards to what are the drills that we're required to do now, so parents knew what the difference was between what we used to refer to as fire drills versus evacuation drills and larger-scale evacuation drills. Engaging parents in the community, again, was something that we had started last year. We've been working with the Chamber of Commerce, working with our staff here to try and encourage more students to take advantage of internship experiences or field opportunities where they can get more hands-on, particularly in their junior and senior years. Another goal for value is, again, the environmental leadership. This district really has done a lot in that area, particularly through the Green Team, and we'd like to continue to expand on some of those efforts. And our capital project, we're beginning that. We've been actually working on some of the planning for that. We started that last year after the bond was passed, and will continue to work on that, with the hopes, you can see, for construction to begin next June. A lot of that will depend upon State Ed, but that is our goal. So, I'm going to pause there just to answer any questions you might have or comments you may have about the goals.
That's good. I just, Jody, in hiring all the people that, you know, we are hiring, are a lot of the elementary teachers also coming in with a special ed background that, you know, certainly would help them in this day and age in the classroom?
We see not all of them. We see a lot of elementary teachers coming in with literacy as well, but we do have an increasing number who have special education, but I wouldn't say that's the majority. We do have secondary staff, though, who come in with special education and a content area, which has been helpful, particularly in hiring at the secondary level, where they're preparing students for Regents exams and graduation. Having that content knowledge has been very helpful. Several of the teachers we've hired at the high school level have dual certification.
That's great. Thank you. I noticed that there are three, I believe, programs that are up for review this year. One was mathematics. Can you explain how you rotate through, how do you determine which departments get reevaluated? Is there a schedule or...
Yeah, we have a schedule. We developed that a few years ago, and essentially, it's about a five-year rotation. We looked at that a few years ago, when the Common Core standards were rolling out, and when the changes were going to take place for anticipated programs. This past year, we reviewed, well, actually, two years it took to review special education programs, and then we had the audit by State Ed. We reviewed English this year, and what was the other one, Dave? Was there another, music?
Music.
Music, was it?
Okay.
So, then next, so then there's a, we have a template for what they review in regards to what are we doing well, what do we need to look at, there's data involved in that, and then a plan for the future. And obviously, that helps with our budget development. If there's funding needs that we may need in year two of the plan, we would want to know that in advance. But it's pretty much a five-year cycle to get through all of the different programs. If something were to change via State Ed or a federal requirement, it might force us to alter that schedule, but that's the plan we have in place.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes, Meredith?
I just had a question regarding, something I saw in one of the slides. It just said that there'd be access to iPads for kindergarten through second graders.
Yep.
And I just wanted to know if you can tell us how much time young children would be spending on screens? I know a lot of people are concerned about our youngest students spending too much time on screens in general, and about them having more time for active play within the classroom and time to work on gross and fine motor skills. So, I was just wondering if you could talk about what that actually means for the youngest students?
Sure. K-2 have been using iPads for quite a few years. These are really upgrades to that, and providing each teacher with a consistent set of them, so that each teacher receive six iPads. And then there's one Chromebook cart for them to share if they wanted to do something as a whole class activity. Typically, they're done in stations for primaries. So, for example, when the teacher's working with individual students for reading, let's say, there may be a station that they're using iPads to practice math or word identification or letter identification. So, it's generally one of the stations... If there's funding needs that we may need in year two of the plan, we would want to know that in advance. But it's pretty much a five-year cycle to get through all of the different programs. If something were to change via state ed or federal requirement, it might force us to alter that schedule, but that's the plan we have in place.
Thank you.
Yes, Meredith?
I just had a question regarding, something I saw in one of the slides. It just said that there'd be access to iPads for kindergarten through second graders. And I just wanted to know if you can tell us how much time young children would be spending on screens? I know a lot of people are concerned about our youngest students spending too much time on screens in general and about them having more time for active play within the classroom and time to work on gross and fine motor skills. So I was just wondering if you could talk about what that actually means for the youngest students?
K-2 have been using iPads for quite a few years. These are really upgrades to that and providing each teacher with a consistent set of them so that each teacher receive six iPads. And then there's one Chromebook cart for them to share if they wanted to do something as a whole class activity. Typically, they're done in stations for primary. So for example, when the teacher's working with individual students for reading, let's say, there may be a station that they're using iPads to practice math or word identification or letter identification. So it's generally one of the stations in that mix. So not a ton of time for primary, and I think that's appropriate. Sometimes if there's free time, they might, you know, they have the more relaxed time for snacks. Some kids may use it as a reward to practice a game. All of our iPad apps do have to be approved through a process, so we generally are consistent in what we're using. But individual students wouldn't be using an iPad for more than, I don't know, 15 or 20 minutes a day at most, I would say.
Thank you.
And as a follow-up to Meredith, how much, I mean, do we spend some time too on communication skills? Often, it's, you know, you can talk to students and they're kind of looking down at you, you know, they don't know how to have eye contact or to be speaking to you.
Some adults either.
Well. But, you know, and I remember a principal saying that, you know, she would say good morning to every student as they came into school and the students would repeat that, but looking, you know, look, making the eye contact, which seems important, especially when using devices, whether it's in school or at home.
I mean, I'd say in school, there's a lot of opportunities for students. They're working together a lot in small groups. They're working with the teachers. I know teachers, particularly at the elementary, do practice with them. When you're, you know, if you're receiving a word, shaking someone's hand, looking them in the eye. So that's done regularly. I think that the, you know, where you see kids looking down all the time as they get into adolescence, they spend a lot more time on their phones and devices outside of school that that becomes the norm for them. But in school, we absolutely, teachers reinforce that all the time. And even with students using technology, when I go in classrooms and observe lessons where they're using Chromebooks or MacBooks, the kids are always communicating with each other. They're never just looking at a screen in isolation, rarely, unless they're doing some kind of an assessment. There's a very different use of technology in the classroom versus students who are always on their phones. And that's, I think, the difference. You know, a smartphone where students are texting all the time or on it, looking down on Instagram or Snapchat is not the same as what they're doing in a classroom under the guidance of a teacher.
I think that's a good example where the school district and the families have to partner. Because the number of times parents have asked me to do things as a board member, whether it's a dress code issue or technology, whatever, when they really should be having that conversation with their kid. So often as a family say, well, make sure we limit screen time. That should also be hopefully done at home, too. So it's a partnership of how much communication skills reinforced at the, at the home as well as in the district. I definitely hear what you're saying and agree with it, but it's also, kid can then just go home and be plopped in front of a screen for hours at a time. And then when you go to school, you're expected not to do that, so.
Right, right.
And I also believe this, at least at the high school, with the renovation of the library, there'd be quite a number of collaborative spaces developed, too. So that's going to provide, at least at the high school level, collaborative project doing. But I also think we do that a lot at the elementary level, too, I know.
Right. Any other, Holly?
Can you speak a little bit to the idea of encouraging positive behavior in the classroom? Specifically, I'm wondering if the teachers are getting training on how to make that happen.
One of the goals related to positive behavior in RTI, we actually started looking at that a little bit last year and looking at also restorative practices in lieu of kind of, I guess, traditional discipline measures. But the positive behavior specifically relates to response to intervention, and that's a process where the buildings agree on what our expectations are for students. And you actually teach students, what does that look like? So what does it look like to be respectful in the classroom versus being respectful on the playground, being respectful in the cafeteria? And there's intentional instruction related to that. And then the positive piece is a way to provide teachers with interventions that they can use in the classroom for students who maybe don't respond to just traditional, you know, you need to pay attention, there's students with different needs. So how can you differentiate, just like we differentiate for reading instruction or math instruction, how do you differentiate when you're dealing with students and behavior? And that there has to be intentional instruction related to that. And every student, what works for one student may not work for every student. And so we are doing, we have a district-wide committee, which consists of representatives for all the elementary buildings who are getting training this summer. During the budget process, we also add or added a teacher who's on, basically will be a support. This teacher we ended up hiring is, has certification in behavior. It's an additional program to people go through for this specific certification to help support not only the buildings but teachers in the classroom who may struggle with dealing with students who have challenging behaviors. So there'll be training for that committee and then that training will then go to the buildings for a larger group and then will be broken down for specific faculty in the fall. And then the other group we need to then work with are the support staff. The noon aides, we did some training with last year, and then also the aides, the students with disabilities and other people in the building who deal with students on a regular basis as well. So we have a plan to do the initial training for that, hopefully to complete that all before the first semester ends.
In connection with the training, will there be any information going home to parents about some of the tools that the teachers are using in the classroom? Because I would think that, obviously, consistency in response to behavior at home and in the classroom would be helpful.
Right, yes, we would, absolutely. We definitely communicate that with parents. And also, one of the goals when you establish the building expectations is they're visible throughout the building. So if you walk in, you can clearly see what are the expectations in this building. And they're, they're general expectations, you know, be respectful, be kind, the building agrees to those. And some of our buildings already have that established. It's not as visible as probably they should be, but that's one of our goals for this year, and then communicating that to families so they can help support that.
It might even be helpful to, you know, at parent, you know, PTA meetings or whatever, having some programs, especially with the behavioral specialists, because, I mean, I remember parents coming in and saying that when a teacher might say, gee, your child is, you know, very good in class and does this, follows directions and, you know, I won't say model student, but something to that nature, and then the parent says, gee, not like that at home. So sometimes parents need that little bit of instruction to how best to handle different situations. So maybe, you know, beyond what might be sent home, maybe, you know, it could be a topic at a PTA meeting.
Sure.
It'd be helpful to parents.
But also, last year, the principals went to a professional development day where behavior was the main topic. So the principals came back with a lot of the information that they learned to talk to the teachers about how to engage with certain behavioral issues. And I think this year was more looking to develop, like, consistent practices throughout the schools, so all of the elementary, middle school, to make sure that what's done at one school is done at another, and it's based on the expertise of the behavioral specialists that we just hired because we realized that it was an issue that needed attention. And so that was one of the focuses of goal number two.
Right. And some of our, some teachers actually and counselors went to that training as well.
Yeah, my sense is since it's a district-wide goal, people had input into that, everyone knows that there's buy-in now, that this is the expectation across.
Right, it's definitely a focus.
Any other questions on the goal? Okay. So the next part of this is to propose a plan for strategic plan where we would be looking at several different things. And I was doing some reading this summer and I thought that this was a really good quote to think about more long-term and that a strategic vision helps us lead our students, school and communities even into a more successful future. So in reviewing what some other districts have done, there's a lot of information out there. We talk about development of a vision for education. Where do we want to be? And looking at our core values, currently, we've used knowledge, character and value for a number of years. Is that where the community still feels those are important? Are those, do we need to expand upon those? Do we want to change those? That it should be inclusive of educators, community leaders, educational experts and people in the private sector. We want to be looking at in conjunction with the enrollment projection reports, which we looked at last year and will continue to look at, our district and building schedules, operation, some of our finances, models and five-years facilities planning, to think about more longer-term planning. And I see some representatives from the start-school-later group, so this would be something that would be included as part of this process. And not just the start-school-later, but there's, there's been concerns for a number of years about many aspects of our schedules in our building. So it would be a great opportunity for us to review all of our building schedules and how do we get the most value out of those for our students. Not sure why this is cut off, but essentially, we would be looking at representatives from our various groups. We'd be looking for parent representatives, district and building administrators, some faculty reps, support staff, again, business representatives, hopefully a representative from the town, some student representatives, and the Board of Education certainly is welcome. I don't know if you'll be able to participate in all of those, but at least if we could have one or two board members who would be consistently part of that process, I think would be helpful.
Can I suggest maybe bumping up the student representatives to maybe two or three? I think they're important voices, so perhaps. Just feedback, I'm not speaking for the board, but I'm making a suggestion.
Sure. Some of the elements that we would want to consider as we move forward with this are what are our core values? What's the heart of our culture? Because those are, the values are what going to help us drive our decision-making. The mission, what's our fundamental purpose as an organization and our vision? And then how are we going to get there? So in getting starting and looking at how some, some other organizations have done something like this, is obviously you have to establish your team first, a timeline, and I'll present that in just a minute, some three or four long-term strategic goals. And then from that, you may have some innovation teams that might be outgrowths of some of that you may want to expand upon, whatever comes out of that. Looking at, obviously, data would be very important in scheduling some focus groups or meetings with staff, students and communities in scheduling the planning sessions. So this is the draft timeline. It's, might be lofty, but we think it could be done as long as people can commit to the process. In that, we would look in September to actually form the planning team. And then we would want to review some of the core values, knowledge, character and value. We'd want to, obviously, in the fall, hold a community forum or two to get feedback. So the planning committee would actually host that and we would probably bring in some facilitators from both these communications staff to help facilitate those discussions. Looking at our data as we move forward and from the community forums, draft some surveys to gather more feedback to a larger audience who perhaps couldn't participate or, or maybe, you know, just didn't come to a meeting but can provide feedback in another venue. And then look to consolidate that feedback. In the spring of 2018, the committee would then look at the feedback to identify possible five-year goals. And then do we need to have some innovation teams or subgroups to examine those a little bit further? And then in May through the following fall, really continue that work and look to put that into an action plan, preparing that in the fall of next year of 18, discuss further with faculty, staff, community stakeholders, and finalize that for the Board of Education to consider in January of 2019. And the only thing I want to say about that in speaking to a few others who've kind of gone through this process is that, once you establish that, it doesn't mean it never changes. It's, it ends up being a work in progress as you move forward because, you know, what we can anticipate, maybe five years, but other things may come up, so you have to be willing to have some flexibility in that. But really establishing the values and where we want to go are really critical in the process. And that's my proposal for the board to consider.
I just wanted to say thank you for the strategic planning. It's exactly, you know, from my personal point of view, I thought that was exactly what I was looking for in the next coming year, so.
Thank you.
From you and your administrative staff.
I like the model. I think it has a wide range of folks to include and it also has realistic timelines. I know sometimes people will say, I want this now, I wanted this. And I think with the areas that you identified early, that takes a lot of input and communication and research. So I appreciate it.
I do think it's a lofty timeframe. I'll just put that out there. There's a lot of information that can come out of those initial meetings that could turn out to be a more lengthy process with subcommittees and whatnot to really get a full plan, but if you can make that, that's great.
And we might have, we might have some of it done in that timeframe and some might take a little bit longer, but that's.
It's a good start.
It's always good to have a goal.
Did everyone call it a strategic plan? I just think of all the probably shelves everywhere where there are strategic plans just sitting on people's shelves.
No, they were.
So we want to ensure that it doesn't do that, I guess that's.
Right, that's why I said, I think it's important that it becomes a working document and that the goals are, become the center of your decision-making, you know, and that there's timeframes and there's expectations and that drives our budget process. If that's what we value most, that's what should be at the heart of our decision-making as well.
I agree.
And I think as the team is constructed, people need to know that that's the timeframe, which may have to flex here and there because of the issues that might come up. But it is ambitious and it's regular and it's consistent. So people should say, I'm buying into this and I'm agreeing. I mean, obviously, light things come up, but people should know that this is a working group that will be working for a year and a half.
Or longer.
Or longer.
But it's a study that you buy into that, like, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So up next, Ms. Kehoe on the tax rate.
I'd like the news now.
Good evening. It's that annual time of the year again when we're getting ready.
To mail out the tax bills. So now that we have the finalized assessment values from the towns, we just want to go through the information so that everybody knows what to expect in just a few weeks. This chart gives you a history of the tax levies and the maximum allowable tax levies and what the rates were for both communities within the school district since 2012, when the tax cap regulations came into play. Since 2013, the first figure that's listed in that second column is the actual percentage increase on the levy. The figure that's in brackets is the maximum amount of tax levy increase that could have been adopted. So you can see, we generally have been at or below that amount. This year's budget has a 0.43% increase. It could have been as high as the 1.31%. That increase means that the district is going to collect 275,000 additional tax dollars in this next budget. As you recall, the levy will be about $64.2 million. If you note, the 2014 to the 2016 years, you can see that the percent changes in the rates for both Bethlehem and New Scotland were the same. And that is somewhat unusual. The reason that happened for us is because the equalization rates that are set by New York State were both at 100% for those communities in that timeframe. You'll note that in 2017, for this year's bills, those rate changes are no longer the same because of two different factors. New Scotland's equalization rate has dropped from 100% down to 98%. Bethlehem's has stayed at 100%. Now, what that means is when the state has looked at the value of home sales within New Scotland, what they're finding is that the assessed values are in fact lower than what the homes are selling for. So in setting those equalization rates, what they're doing is allowing us to make sure that we're proportionally allocating that tax levy between the two communities. And effectively, because New Scotland rates were slightly below market by 2%, the tax rate for New Scotland is slightly higher than Bethlehem's. And that's really just to compensate for the fact that the assessment values are lower. Now, coupled with that shift, in the Bethlehem tax base, the total assessed values went up about $25.5 million. And what that means is that you have more parcels that are able to share in the tax levy. levy for that community. So that's why you see that there is a decrease of .58% in the Bethlehem tax rate, and New Scotland's is going up 1.45%. This really just reflects the carving up of that tax levy. The district is still going to only get the .43% additional in the levy, but we're allocating the total levy between those two communities based on the assessed values in those two So what that means for you in terms of the tax rates, for Bethlehem taxpayers, it's actually going to be a decrease of about $30 if your home is assessed at $250,000. That, of course, is just the school tax rate, and that assumes that there haven't been any other changes in your assessed value or in your exemptions for the year. In New Scotland, with the rate increase, it would be about $75 more for a $250,000 The other element that is important for us to consider, and in fact, that's going to be part of the tax rate resolution that you will adopt under the financial section of the agenda, is where we take a look at the restricted reserves, and we specify how much money we want to allocate into those different reserves. The middle column shows what we had projected when we had our last meeting in May, and then the far right column shows what we are including with your approval tonight as our unaudited numbers as of June 30th, 2017. And the one reserve that changed from the estimates was the tax sursuriary reserve. We knew that there were a number of older challenges to the assessments that were being settled over the course of the year, so we had expected that that would drop from the level of $500,000 last year down to about $350,000. Based on an actual analysis of the claims that are still outstanding, that needs to go a little bit lower, down to $300,000. So that's good news in that those who are protesting their tax valuations, their assessed values are in fact receiving at least resolution. They might not like the resolution, but it is being decided, okay? The encumbrances are a little bit higher than we had projected, and that reflects an upgrade that was needed on the energy management system. Greg had a failure on some of the software elements late in the year, so that's why that number is higher than we had expected. We did come in right on target. In that meeting in May, we had anticipated that the surplus would be $2.3 million, and that's what we're showing on our year-end totals. So for our total fund balance of $17.2 million, broken out between the various restricted reserves, the undesignated amount is that $3.745 million. That has to be below 4% of next year's budgeted amount, and that will be in at about 3.86%, which is a really, it's a recommended place to be. That gives us our cash flow and our ability to weather any unexpected developments in the budget. The STAR program. I wanted to give this a quick mention, just so taxpayers knew what to expect. I think this is an area that has caused some confusion for a number of residents with the changes that have been enacted over the last few years. So previously, the STAR tax exemption had appeared on many property owners' tax bills. The state changed that program last year so that if you were buying a new home, you no longer would get that exemption on your tax bill. Instead, you would get a check directly from the state if you were qualifying. So this property tax relief credit is in fact, in addition to the STAR benefit that you get on your tax bill or that you get in a separate check to you. So assuming you meet the eligibility requirements that are listed on this slide, you will automatically, no action required, you should be seeing a check in the mail from the state at some point in the fall for the whopping amount of $185. So watch your mail. So as I mentioned earlier, the tax bills are coming shortly. These bills should either be delivered to your home address or delivered to your escrow company by September 1st. Related to the STAR program, the state indicated that there might be a delay on the transmission of their file with the STAR exemption information to the towns, which then have to transmit it to BOSI's, who's generating the bills. So they told us that there's a slight possibility that that might push us to the end of our printing and release timeline. So if the bills do not arrive by September 1st, they're coming, and give it a few days, but they should be there, I would think, within that week. Regardless of when those bills are received, all payments must be postmarked by September 30th in order to avoid the penalties. That date is a Saturday, but it is still considered a business day. The post office is open, and the school, or the Pioneer Savings Bank that collects the taxes for us is also open. Each year, one of the most common complaints that we deal with from taxpayers are typically coming unfortunately from residents who wait until the very last moment to send their payments in, and then they hit a glitch. And the glitch is either something from the post office. Sometimes we've seen instances where they send in a check, they forget to sign the check, they transpose the amounts, the amount that's written doesn't match the written-out word, that words that are written on the check, and those do not count as valid payments, and then they have to be returned. If we get those in the middle of the month, we have time to return those back to the taxpayer. They can fix it, and then they can still get the payments in on time. So it's certainly the choice to wait until the end, but just be careful, because that's where we tend to get more complaints. We don't have the ability to waive those penalties, so if it's not made invalid payment or doesn't get to us on time, those penalties do get assessed.
Judy, do, does the postmark count now? Because I've read that with the town, there was talk about it not counting.
Postmark still counts. They have not changed that. So as long as it's postmarked by September 30th, we would probably get it that Monday or Tuesday. That's the first thing they look at. So if it's a valid postmark, it counts as an on-time payment. Any other questions?
Can you go back to the slide where you had it broken out where encumbrances had gone from $100,000 to $250,000? Can you explain that again one more time to me?
Yes.
Why that went up? It's not a small amount, it's
No. That was because there was an unexpected repair to the energy management system for ONM. So it was a software-related issue that we needed to take care of. Obviously, we didn't know it was coming, which is why
I didn't quite catch that the first time around.
Which is why that's higher than the projection.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to recognize visitors who would like to address the Board of Education on an agenda item.
Speaking was on the agenda, you can mark.
Yeah. You can state your name.
Can I take this out of the
Sure.
Thanks. Hey, Jeremy Snyder. I've got kids at the middle school and the high school. So I have been involved for a bit of time with the Start School Later Group. I learned about this issue when I was taking in graduate-level science class, and the science is just very clear, and the, some very large studies at other schools that have moved high school start times later have found very positive benefits. Much better grades, fewer crashes of high school students that are driving. So when we talk about wellness, I think this is a, you know, a very important way of addressing that. So what I would ask is for a committee to be formed to look into how this could be implemented in Bethlehem, because it's been successfully implemented in a number of other districts, and they've overcome many issues that have, you know, we've, we have concerns about, you know, bus schedules and sports schedules and all that. Other schools have figured out ways around that. So what I would ask for is a committee to do some investigations and figure out what are the successful approaches and how we could implement that in Bethlehem. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Address that.
Yeah, that actually is part of the proposal I just presented, that that would be something the committee would be reviewing. In fact, the board received a pretty comprehensive package of research related to that in other schools who had implemented that, so they've had a chance to review that.
Great. I was wondering, do you see that as being part of one of the innovation teams that break out in the fall of 2018?
That would, that would depend upon the committee and what the, what they find from the community focus groups and surveys that would be part of that process.
Okay. So that would, so 2018 would be the earliest that this would be addressed?
Yeah, likely.
Okay. So I guess my request then is because this is such a clear issue, is that this be looked at earlier, and then the information be fed into these groups? Because I don't think we need to wait a year to look into that.
Well, it doesn't sound like, this could be actually discussed starting in the fall. As soon as the committees together, the recommendations would be coming out in a year and a half, along with other recommendations about other scheduling issues or concerns. So it doesn't, you're not waiting for it to be addressed till then, but you're really doing a comprehensive review.
Right.
And then, that's what I heard from the presentation.
I didn't think there was a, I don't think there was a set timeframe that it would be 2018 or 2019. I didn't
Right.
Get that from the presentation. I think we're getting a committee together. They're going to do the research and the investigation that I'm sure that you've done a lot of, collect it, make a community forum group, have discussions with all the stakeholders involved, and then come up with a recommendation whether, A, Bethlehem is going to move in that direction, or B, they're not going to move in it, you know? So I think that, but I don't think there's a timeframe of a year, year and a half. I think once, once that information is here, we will deliver that, and then the next step.
Okay, great. So I apologize, I apologize if I misunderstood. I thought that the first year was about identifying issues, and then in the fall of 2018, that was about breaking out to ident, to work on specific issues. But if this issue can be addressed sooner than that, then that'd be terrific.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Courtney Richmond. I'm actually one of the teachers that you're voting on tonight for new personnel. I just, well, something that resonated with me was the desire to have a relationship with the Albany City, and I just wanted to tell you that I came to you from Albany City, and I still have a really strong relationship with the families and with the teachers, and I'm going to be teaching music, which is one of the greatest ways to include everybody. So if anybody's interested in further discussion, I would love to reach out, and I plan on attending more meetings, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome aboard.
My name's Eric Smith, and I have two elementary students at Hama Grail, and I'm mindful, Jody, of what you just presented, but I did just want to go on record saying I'm in favor of of looking at the later start school times, and I do think my experience with strategic planning, something that has these far-reaching implications for operations, among other things, strategic plan is an appropriate forum to do that, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
I did send an email to the board, but it was during the vacation, so I don't know if people got it, but I just wanted to, I'm interested in the school schedules and investigating them, and what I would really like to just add is that I'm really glad we're going to be looking at them, but that I hope that the board will approach this discussion from the point of view that really it's important to be in line with the policy requirement to take care of the health of, and safety of our children, and that because the science is there, that the time should be start, pushed back. Not a question of whether or not the time will be pushed back, but how best to do that. I know Gilderland has submitted a resolution to the NISBA, asking them to make a recommendation statewide for districts about implementing later start times for adolescents. And also, the National PTA has released a resolution this summer, also urging districts to do that across the country. So I have that information, and I did send those links to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon the shaky hand, shaky voice.
Is that anybody else?
Hi, good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say congratulations to the new board members and welcome, and thank you to all of you for donating your and your family's time to being on the board. I know it's a lot, so thank you.
Can you, can you just state your name really quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Heather Spitzberg. I have two children at Slingerlands. First, I wanted to address the issue of the goal of positive reinforcement in classrooms. I wanted to let you know, Holly had asked the question, but I wanted to let you know that I have already seen this starting to be implemented at Slingerlands, and with, with good benefits in, in both of my children's classrooms. And there was communication, at least with parents, that had children involved in that sort of differentiation and how to reinforce that kind of talk at home. What I would suggest is that you make sure that the, that sort of discussion is had with all parents, because what I found was, it was only being had with parents whose children were directly involved with that differentiation as opposed to as the whole classroom. But I found it to be a very beneficial program at Slingerlands, so thank you, and thank you for making it a goal. I'm also very involved with Start School Later. I'm not going to repeat all the information you all have heard and seen to date. I would just say that I believe that later start times in high school and different scheduling in buildings is coming. It's coming to New York State, it is coming, and it is going to happen here. And I believe that all of you are in the very fortunate position of being able to leave a legacy of a school board that really rises up to meet that coming challenge that all school districts are going to face. And I really urge you all to work at the strategic plan and encouraging the members of the strategic plan to get to that ideal in a timely fashion. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful comments and presentation to the board. Anybody, is there anybody else, or? Item number eight, professional personnel. I just want, oh, seven, sorry, I skipped over. I was so excited to get to, I'm hoping to help Jim Smith out, who's wearing his suit coat all night and probably warm over there, so. Item number seven, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance, action items one through five.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, professional personnel. I'd like to recognize Jim Smith for coming to the board meeting. He's going to be our new hall principal at the high school, and he has Mr. Dommel here supporting him through the warm, warm room, so welcome. It's a great school district.
I just want to let you know, Sherman, that I am going to now put him in charge since he was involved with the technical meeting. He's going to be running a parent group, where he's going to be bringing parents in, so not only do they know how the money is, but they are actually going to see how teachers realize in the classroom, so.
Great. There you go. Welcome aboard.
And we have it on tape.
So thank you, welcome. We're happy to have you, and Dave will be a great mentor. And Courtney Richmond left, where I'd welcome her too, but we said hello before she left, so. Motion to approve?
Submove.
All in favor? Oh, wait. Oh, sorry, second.
I just wanted to make sure you have
Was it last?
Was it one to twenty-five? What did it say? Was it a six? Oops, sorry. You know what? I skipped over that. Let me start again. Is it recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through 25?
Submove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through 16.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through seven.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on. I'd like a little discussion on that before we jump in.
Okay. Oh, I forgot to ask about discussion. Thank you, Jonathan.
First off, the, I wanted, Jody, I wanted to compliment you on the policy that's now in play, that will hopefully be in place for acceptable use. That no longer includes the criminal penalties that we used to have in there, and, and I'm grateful that that is gone. I am a little concerned still about the drone policy, because some of the terminology that we're using, I, maybe I was wrong, but I understood that we were not going to open it up and allow community members to use drones on school property. And it says, under procedure to seek permits, it says any individual, class or group. I'd be more comfortable if it was student, school-related, so that, I mean, that would include contractors, school groups, et cetera. But any individual gives the, perhaps the impression that literally anyone can apply. And I would be concerned about.
Do you know what section that is, Jonathan?
Yeah, it's, it's in the authorized drone use procedures.
Okay.
And it's A.
A.
Says any individual.
Classroom group seeking to operate a drone.
And I have a similar concern in D, where it says all requests by groups or organizations. Again, I think we need to be a little more specific. If they're school-related, and it would include anyone doing work on the school or, or for the district, it would include basically anything that we, I think, discussed as a board before. But I'd be concerned about leaving this language as open as it is.
So what, what do you think, do you think we should just add to each of those A and D, school-related groups? Does that?
I'm, I'm not.
But isn't it be O and M? O and M, like Greg indicated that sometimes they come in.
Right, but, but that would be.
Contractor.
But the contract, contracted would be school-related because they're connected to us through a contract.
But why, why are you worried about the individual as language? Because they still have to get the required permit, and we would still say.
Right, but then we're engaged in denying a permit to someone, as opposed to if we set it up as the policy is for school-related use only. We are not engaged in denying the public, and then the public saying, well, you have a policy since everyone, why aren't you letting me in? And that's just a battle we, we don't need to have.
So you could have an A, any individual class or group that is school-related seeking to operate, and then in D, all requests by school-related groups or organizations must be signed? Is that, is that way there shows it has to be connected to the school?
That would solve my concern, yes.
Is someone writing that down? Oh, thank you.
Do we want our school vendors?
Wait, I'm sorry?
School vendors?
They're, they are, they are school-related.
I don't know. When I hear school-related, and I'm not, I'm the person.
Well, I'm not, I, I am not going to say that that is the best possible language.
But you need, you want it to.
But, but it needs to be changed, and I would throw it.
It's not school-related group, it's school-related function, right? That's what you're saying?
Well, because it, no, because it could be in, it.
Could be an individual student with teacher direction, because we said it had to be with teacher direction.
Right, but it's, the function is related to the school, not necessarily, because the contract, you know, I don't know.
I, I would, I would suggest that this is something we just hand to the lawyer and let, let the lawyers figure out what the appropriate.
Language.
Term would be, and then bring it back to the board for, for another law.
Yeah.
So you captured the concern, Judy, and then the language can follow.
Yes.
We can do that.
I'm not wedded to the language. I'm wedded to the idea.
But that has to be attached to the school somehow.
Yes.
I would agree with that.
I, I had something on one of the items, the pesticide application. You know, having been on the facilities committee for a gazillion years, I think that's number They're, they're very judicious in their application of pesticides and only use the appropriate kinds of chemicals when needed, so.
This was something that you, the board approved last year, and then these, these two fields didn't take.
Yeah, yeah. Got it. No, I just know that if someone saw pesticide on the, the agenda.
Right. Okay, so.
We have another question.
I'm sure.
The, the social service dogs. Does that include all therapy dogs? I mean, that does not include ones that are necessary for an IEP or whatever. These, this is like for coming into, like reading, reading with the students.
No, it includes any service dog.
Oh, any service.
So they have to provide, basically, it's vaccination requirements and good citizenship. But if they're a therapy dog with a student or.
So this is broad, this is the terminology it's used for any, okay. Because that's, I hadn't heard of social service dog.
Yeah, that includes all of.
All of, all of.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have another issue on the claims auditor policy. Is the, is the person that we have designated as the claims auditor, what else do they do for the district? Are they also the same person that signs the checks?
No, 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 no.
No. Claims auditor is completely independent. They do nothing for the district but review those claims, and the checks are signed by the school business administrator.
I would comment on that, though. An auditor, in, in general terms, would not be somebody who reviews our operations. An auditor who is somebody who comes in and independently does a review after our operations has completed the process. So I'm not sure if that would be an accurate title, just based on being an auditor and.
That was part of the legislation that came out.
And we get those reports at every, like, looks at every meeting. I mean, they're basically checking each of the check. That's why we get those check marks saying all the checks are accounted for and.
Sometimes it's called an internal claims auditor.
I'm an internal auditor, and we.
But the internal auditor is looking at risk, whereas the internal claims auditor is looking at ensuring that.
I do claims as well, and I, I verify that payments are accurate, but I don't approve payments. It's a conflict of interest as any type of auditor in an operations to approve a payment and then be auditing it.
No, they don't approve. No, they just look, ensure that, that, that the proper procedures are followed before payment was made.
I thought that she was approving.
No, no, no.
The expenses that.
No.
She's just verifying that all policies have been complied with, that the necessary quotes were there, that the pricing ties back to the awarded bids or the pricing sheets, you know, the quotes that were received. And then when she has made sure that all that documentation is in place and policies have been complied with, then she signs off, prepares the report for the board, and then it's authorized for disbursement. So there's no payment out the door.
But she's still, but yeah, it's still not an auditor.
But that's the statutory language, and that was passed.
I, I just wanted to clarify.
So basically, what you're, Judy, what you're saying is that the term auditor under the education law statute is different from what we would normally assume as laypeople and auditor.
It may well be, yes. I mean, again, it's a claims auditor.
I didn't know there was a statute.
Yeah, it's a part, legislation after Roslin on Long Island had.
It was given to us.
Disappropriation of $100,000.
It's given to us.
So there are five parts. This is one of the five parts. And, and this, this internal claims auditor is responsible to the board, and we designate the audit committee as being one of them. And the audit committee actually hires the person.
Do we know, can you, can you tell me what the statute is, just, not now, but later, just so I can take a look at?
Yes, I couldn't repeat it.
No, I didn't expect it.
Statute in verse of the moment, but I'll be happy to provide that. So remember, the choice for the board is you either, every single one of the board members looks at every single one of the claims to sign off and approve it for payment, or you appoint a claims auditor who does that on your behalf. So if there are any exceptions or issues, that comes in a report directly to you as board members, and, you know, the, the amount is not cleared.
My question was just on the title, not actually like the job function, just to make sure.
Now, we approved, we, we appointed that person at the last board meeting.
Correct. At the organizational meeting.
Remind me again who that is?
Dana Burns.
Okay.
And as board members, we can, when there's exceptions raised, we can always ask for, you know, what, you know, the remedy is usually given, but we can also ask for additional information as to why that happened, or is this a pattern in a particular office or individuals that, you know?
Yeah, I just had, I had a question on the title. It wasn't necessarily the, the job function.
I have a whole folder on that, and I'll be happy to share that.
Thank you. Love reading. Jonathan, what was the policy, was it 1505 or 1505R with regards to the drone language that you brought up earlier?
It was, wait a minute.
The regulation.
It was 1505, 1505R.
R, okay.
But I think they work together.
Yeah, they, they do work together, and you're, you're going to have to look at both.
Okay.
Well, not you personally, but.
Does anybody have any further questions on, on the policies? All right, so I'm going to recommend that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through seven with approval on 1505 and 1505R with recommendations for language change via the attorneys.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to recognize visitors who would like to address the Board of Education on a non-agenda item.
Future meetings and events. We have Wednesday, August 23rd, a board retreat at 5:30 PM at the high school. On Wednesday, September 6th, we have executive session at 6:00 and a regular board meeting at 7:00. And Tuesday, September 19th, anticipated executive session at 6:00 and a regular board meeting at 7:00.
What's the first day of school?
Oh, Glenmont. The September 19th meeting is at Glenmont.
The, uh, seven.
It's the fifth.
The seventh for teachers, right? The fifth is teachers, seven is Thursday is students, September 7th.
First day of school is seven, so our meeting is the night before the first day of school.
Yes. At this time, we have no need to go back to executive session. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a recommendation.
Yeah?